Trustee meeting for November 25th, 2025. If everyone can stand and say the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hello, everybody. Bielki?
Here.
Burdan?
Here.
Haskell?
Here.
Kuzma, here. And Valiska, here.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, under commendations, we have two commendations. The first one, I would like to start with Andy Jakobic, if you don't mind standing. I am really pleased, if you do not know Andy, you need to know Andy. Andy has helped this district five times. Way back when they did the remonstrance on the middle school, and he has helped us with four referendums, which is no small task. And Andy has served as the chair. He is tireless. I don't know what we would do without him as the pack chair. Andy's kids graduated from Hanover. When, Andy?
2016.
And he still does it. And it's hard work, and it's so greatly appreciated. And I asked him once, I said, why do you do this? You don't even have kids in the system anymore. And he said, because education is so important. Hanover was good to my kids, and because it's so important for community and home values. So Andy, on behalf of myself and the entire board, I have a gift for you. I'd like to just say thank you so much. Do you have anything you want to say?
It's been, I've been doing this a while. I'm four for five. I just, first off, I'd like to congratulate the board. It's always hard to basically go in early on a referendum. You had two years left to do that. We went in early in 2020. I think that was the right decision. I think this was the right decision. With SCA1, I'm hearing up to 100 school districts might be doing referendums. So that's going to be quite the battle there. I'd like to thank Mary and Adam. Obviously, they helped with everything with the PAC and guiding us there. Three other people I'd like to mention. Lori Michich, who was in finance and helped us with all of that. And then Heather DeSauer and Becky Delgado. Although I didn't have co's per se, they basically rose to the occasion, and they were, they became my co-co's on all of that. We had about 60 people that volunteered for the PAC. So this is never a one-person thing. This is always a, you know, a community effort. And so for that, I'm grateful to the community. Again, I do this because education was important to me. The district was very good to my kids, but my, all the kids in the district now deserve the same opportunities my kids had. And too many people sometimes, when their, when their kids are gone, they look at this and say, I'm done. And so I've stayed true to that. So, but thank you. I think relief is the one thing that we got out of this one more than anything. Some people are probably not happy that I've done this five times. I didn't quit math, and I think it comes to about $150 million that we've done from building the middle school and, you know, with everything that we've done with these facilities. So, but again, thank you. I'm happy, happy to serve the district.
Thank you, Andy. Thanks, Andy. Tonight, our second commendation is for our six outstanding Hanover's Got Talent artists chosen for the administrative awards for first quarter. Mrs. Chambers, would you like to?
I'll definitely take that.
Thank you.
I'm Mrs. Chambers. I am the art teacher over at Lakeview Elementary. And before I start, I always like to say that we have a wonderful art program in Hanover, which is so great that we could lean on each other and have such great talent in our community. We, when we select the student, we do look at art, obviously. But we then look at the child and how they are a role model in our school as well. And I feel like we always pick somebody that is not only just really good at art, but is one that, you know, is good all around. Great role model there for other kids, helps the teachers, you know? And I think that's why I love our staff that we do that. I also have to mention that it's great that he was saying that he still comes back, even though kids, his kids are no here. If you look at our board, we have a lot of us like that. And that speaks volumes for Hanover, that a lot of us still stick around to make Hanover so great, even though our kids have gone through here, my own kids as well. So I just had to touch on that. This student that I picked, I have been making him wait since kindergarten, but he blew me away when I knew him in kindergarten. But I love his personality. He is, if I could tell any, I'm going to age myself, my little Ed McMahon, my Johnny Carson. He likes to come up and chat with me during art, and he just gets it, like the adult humor. And I am going to mention his adorable dimple because it is. But, and it's also great because his mom is in our little art community. So Will Baknowski is my selection. Come on up. And I have to speak, his, the tree that's up in the left corner. It's one of my favorite art projects we do. I teach the kids how to draw realistic trees, and the kids, I always tell them I doodle and draw trees all the time, and he got so into it moment one. And then his parents, they had to go out of town, and he was so worried and worked up about it. So we made time for him to come in early to make sure he got it finished. And then I thought, you could just turn it in black and white. And he's like, oh, no, I need to finish it. So he put in extra time to get it to look like that. So I even told him, I said, dude, you're going to totally design my next tattoo. So I'm excited to also have his mom get to come up and present the next one, because she works at HLA. So, and we're going to stay up here. You get to stay up here, I'll be awkward the whole time. We'll scoot off to the side for your moms. Congrats.
All right. I'm Mrs. Baknowski. I work at HLA, the pre-K, if anyone doesn't know what that is. So technically, I'm art, music, gym, princess, all of the things. I chose Nadia Pyer for this award. All right. And I chose Nadia. She's one of the oldest pre-K students, which I can tell, her personality, how she follows the rules. She's the leader in our classroom, for sure. But she's very meticulous about her art, too. She wants it done a certain way. Right? Yeah, yeah. She likes it, she likes it to be very nice. So hers is the owl back there. So they did like pork paintings, so some of them just like looked like big blobs, but hers looks like an apple. She really took her time on that, so, and she takes her time on all of her art projects. And when I asked her if she does art at home, she said, no. So I said something to mom, and mom said, no, she makes messes all the time. So she does do art at home, too. But yeah, so she's a wonderful little girl. Congratulations.
All right, we'll have Jane Ball.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Okens, art teacher at Jane Ball. And I am so excited to recognize DJ Calhoun this evening. DJ is a very detailed artist in the classroom. Most of my students are like, are we done yet? This is so much. And DJ is just over there working on his own. And the other great quality about him is he's so helpful with other students. If someone is like, I don't know how to do this, he just taps in, he's like, let me help you. And so he's always my, like, little assistant. So I always appreciate that. So this is for you, bud.
All right, Red Cedars.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Mifflin. I'm the art teacher at Red Cedars. I'm proud to recognize Eleanor Meredith as my administrative artist. Her art is the skulls in the back at the very bottom, the purple. I picked her because I could tell from the very beginning when she started drawing that hers was very neat, and she added her own twist on. She put dishes, there's one upside down, and it's holding a bunch of dishes. And that was the coolest skulls that I saw out of all of them. And she's always helpful in art, so I knew that I had to pick her.
Middle school.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Sweetwood. I am the art teacher at the middle school, and I chose Maggie Schultz as my artist. Her artwork is the symbol line, "Bottom right," where she split it up into seven sections and introduced each seven elements of art. I am proud to recognize you, Maggie, because not only are you helpful, because you're in my homeroom all year, but I've seen you help students at the table when they're struggling, especially when they're absent. So I do appreciate that. And you just have this eye for very detailed work. So I am very proud to give this to you.
Well, is Alexis anyone? Mr. Cody had picked an Alexis Desti, and I have her certificate, so I'll make sure. You want me to send it in the room? Okay.
Can I have all the students go stand by the HCSC sign?
I know. Poor Maggie.
Maggie, you don't have to. All right, does everybody look here? Hold up your sign so I can see them. Perfect. Three, two, one. Perfect. Great job, guys.
Parents, this ends our period of commendations. If you want to take a picture of your child's artwork, please feel free to do so. You are also welcome to leave or stay. I want to say thank you very much for coming. I want to say happy Thanksgiving, and thank you for sharing your children.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Right, when it comes to comments and discussion relative to items on the agenda, we have nobody signed off. Self-approval agenda. Who would like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. Any comments or discussion?
Roll call.
Bielki?
Yes.
Burdan?
Yes.
Haskell?
Yes.
Kuzma?
Yes.
Valiska?
Yes.
Four to the five rule approval.
Under reports tonight, administration has no.
School board reports, I do have a couple for both Cedar Lake Redevelopment Commission and St. John Redevelopment Commission. Both towns are discussing residential tip at their next meetings. Cedar Lake's meeting is December 2nd at 6:30 PM at the Cedar Lake Town Hall. And the St. John one is at 6:00 PM on December 10th, Wednesday, December 10th. We do need the community and teachers, staff, anybody to please come to these meetings and help us voice on how this would hurt the school district. Having residential tips pretty much mean the town gets the tax dollars from those properties, those developments. The school districts, libraries, township, county, they don't receive a penny. And even though they may say, well, subdivisions for 55 and older, you don't have kids there. We do. We bus kids in subdivisions that are 55 and older. It doesn't necessarily mean nobody's living there that has school-age kids. So we need those tax funds, and we need to fight the residential tips. St. John, I believe, already has two residential tips in the Hanover Township area. So we need to kind of stop them from continuing approving those. We already stopped Cedar Lake once, but we got to fight to stop them again. Anybody else have any? Then approve of consent agenda. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Comments or discussion? Roll call.
Bielki?
Yes.
Burdan?
Yes.
Haskell?
Yes.
Kuzma?
Yes.
Valiska?
Yes.
Four to the four to five rule approval.
Under informational tonight, we have high school course changes for the 26, 27 school year. Mr. Masico?
Oh, yeah, okay. You have a sheet in front of you that has the course changes. I'll just go very quickly. This will be brought back for formal approval in the next meeting. So the first is we have interactive media. We're just changing the pathway. We're replacing graphic designer layout with interactive media. The teacher believes that the kids will be able to get four credentials instead of two, and they'll be more marketable when they graduate from high school. We're adding two classes, chemistryology and human performance. That is the exercise science CT pathway we started this year. So it's just an addition to those kids being able to take the next classes. Computing foundations for digital age, that's going to be a requirement for all new, for all students in the new diploma. So the 10th graders will start taking that next school year. Computer science, we are moving away from cybersecurity into more just computer science. The teacher feels like it's pigeonholing kids, and this will give them a broader range and more opportunities once they're through the program. We've added math lab for Algebra II. These are for students that are interested in attending college, but may need a little extra help in Algebra II to get through it. Advanced science special topics, which would be conservation science and oceanography. It's just additions to what we offer now, which is environmental science, which could be a little boring at times, so this is maybe more high interest. And then German III, our new German teacher will start her third year next year, so this will just be those kids advancing to the next part. We're only getting rid of two classes, which I mentioned at top, and then the course changes. The speech class will be required for 10th graders, but 11th and 12th graders next year will be able to take them as electives if they choose to. We are also adding the Indiana College Core. So starting next year, our juniors will be able to take dual-credit classes and graduate with 30 credit hours. When they graduate, according to state law, those have to be accepted by all colleges and universities in the state of Indiana. I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for all of that. I know you work hard with us. Indiana College Core is going to save families a lot of money. The second informational item tonight is in regard to the Teacher Appreciation Grant. In years past, every teacher that received a rating of effective or highly effective received, was eligible for TAG dollars. Unfortunately, that has changed this year, and only 20% of district staff can receive TAG dollars. So that creates a little bit of challenge, because you have a lot of talented teachers in this district, and it's divisive. So in keeping with that, there's criteria that has to be met. We cannot identify more, we can't identify more than 20% of eligible teachers, which means of the names that were submitted and approved by the state, that's only 31 teachers that will be recognized this year. And a certain criteria has to be met. There are three tiers. The first tier is the lowest tier of, a teacher is recognized with $3,500. And they have to have documentation that shows that the kids drew a year on assessments. Teachers are eliminated from consideration if they do not have a roster of students. So any teacher that is PE, art, music, counselor, social workers, they are immediately taken out of the possibility of receiving those dollars. We all know it takes all teachers to help our kids across the finish line. The second tier is exemplary. That's a $5,000 stipend. That's based on test results, as well as if you're a mentor for a teacher. And then the third tier is the exemplary, and that's $7,500. And that is based on tests. And if you're a mentor, and if you teach in a high-needs subject area or a graphic, geographically shortage area, we don't have geographic shortage areas. So there are three tiers. We figured, we had a committee of, gosh, was it five, Mr. Masico?
Yes, five teachers on us.
Representation from each of the buildings, all grade levels. So what we are doing, our process is going to be, teachers are allowed to submit an application. The application has to be submitted by September, January 9th. There are certain assessments that they, that are approved for them to use. They will submit their application to me by January 9th. Then we will have a random drawing on January 20th in this room with all of the committee members, which is five, and Mr. Masico and myself. And do you want to explain how that process works?
So just to keep it fair and, what would you say?
Transparent?
Yeah, transparent. The state's obviously trying to pit teachers against administration and cause friction. So what we're going to do is choose the order of the schools. So K2, Jane Ball and Lincoln will be linked together. And so we'll pick out of a hat, if it's the middle school, they'll draw first, and K2 will draw second, whatever. And then it'll be like the NBA lottery draft, where we'll go down to the end, and then we'll come back. And basically, we'll have the 104,000 that was awarded to our district, and with each draw, we'll subtract that money, and we'll keep going until we run out of funds. We'll also, instead of having names, we'll have numbers that correspond with teacher names. Again, just so there's no chance of doing something that's above our, I guess.
Thank you. So if we have 25 teachers apply, and of the 25, they're all eligible, they're all put into the random drawing, but we will run out of money before we award 25 teachers. So those teachers will be given preferential placement in future years. I fully anticipate this will change next year. The state is going to be pretty lax about what they accept this year, but they're going to tighten it up even more for subsequent years. So we, I want to commend the committee. They were wonderful to work with, and this was the fairest way we could come up with to recognize teachers. But unfortunately, it doesn't recognize every one of our teachers.
It's sad that all the teachers in the state have to go through this. It is, it just...
Did they set the amounts?
Yeah, based on your population, based on your enrollment.
So somebody thought it was a good idea to say, forget that you're all highly effective, and we're going to give you each $500. We're going to give one person $7,500 and think that the other ones aren't going to hate them.
You're exactly right. Yeah. That's why we're using numbers.
Wow. And then how do we get kids to go to college to become teachers?
Well, it's not even a recognized, uh...
Not a profession?
Yeah.
Not professional? So we don't have to pay our professional licenses anymore, right?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
This, every time that I think things can't get more stupid, they somehow get more stupid.
And the rationale for this was if all of the teachers were truly highly effective and effective, then our scores would be higher than they are. Kids are not widgets. We can't expect them to perform on a dime. And just on a bell curve alone, there are going to be failures, and there are going to be passerings, a passage. So this is really unfortunate.
Teachers have no control, walks through their door every day. You just can't control what they're coming to school.
Well, and when they keep changing standardized testing, and it's apparent that those tests are not sufficient, you can't use that as a benchmark.
But that's what they want us to use.
Thank you to the teachers that took their time to be on a committee to guarantee things probably won't get any worse.
And we were very attentive to that, because we didn't, it was really great that those teachers stepped forward and volunteered to help, but we didn't want them, I don't know, upsetting their peers.
Right, retaliation or something, because they were the ones who decided. Yeah, yeah. It puts everybody in a bad spot, that's for sure.
So that'll come back for board approval at the next meeting. The other item that I'd like to share with you tonight, and again, I have to, I have to thank the principals, Mr. Masico, all of the work that went into the student fees recommendation. As you know, textbook rental is no longer required by state statute. However, districts are given latitude to charge for consumables. And those are any materials that kids use during the school year that will have to be replenished the following year. So based on that, the principals were asked to determine the consumables that are used and the cost. So what we are proposing is that all K through 2 students pay $40 per student. Third and fourth grade would pay $32 per student. Fifth grade would pay $26 per student. And sixth through eighth grade would pay $64 per student. Grades nine through 12, you have in that packet, that's going to be contingent upon what classes they take in their schedule. So that will come back for board consideration and approval at the next meeting. Do you have any questions on that?
I personally don't know. I mean, I know when my kids were at school, I paid fees for things.
A lot, a lot more than that number.
Yeah, a lot more than that number, way more than that number. But yeah, things, things cost money. Paper costs money.
Masters, crayons, all of them.
Everything, yes. I mean, granted, I mean, like, Red Cedars had a great group of parents that got tons of stuff donated and everything, but not every school has that. Not every kid has that. Not every teacher has it either.
Thanks for being creative and finding a way to help out a little bit where the state keeps chopping and chopping at the funding.
Thank you. So all of that will come back at the December meeting. And those are all of the informational items tonight. Under act... Under action items, request approval of the following board policies. Replacement policy 8500 on food service program and revised policy 8510 on wellness. This requires formal board action.
I'll make a motion to approve replacement policy 8500 and revised policy 8510. One second. Any comments or discussion? Roll call.
Belkey.
Yes.
Burdan.
Yes.
Haskell.
Yes.
Kuzma, yes. Felizca.
Yes.
For the 450 approval.
Thank you. Request approval of revised policy 9150 on school visitors, revised policy 9160 on public attendance at school. This requires formal board action.
Anybody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve revised policy 9150 and revised policy 9160. Anybody want a second?
I'll say.
Comments or discussion? Roll call.
Belkey.
Yes.
Burdan.
Yes.
Haskell.
Yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Felizca. Yes.
For the 450 approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Revised by law 0142 on election and eligibility to serve, revised by law 0144.1 on compensation, revised by law 0167.2 on executive session. These policy, these bylaws require formal board action.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve revised by law 0142, revised by law 0144.1, and revised by law 0167.2.
One second. Comments or discussion? Roll call.
Belkey.
Yes.
Burdan.
Yes.
Haskell.
Yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Felizca. Yes.
For the 450 approval.
Thank you.
Our final action item tonight, I'd like to request approval of the following donations. Letter A, a donation of $25 to the Hanover Lunches of Love Program from Bob and Fran Justak. Letter B, a donation of $100 to the Hanover Lunches of Love Program from the Fraternal Orders of Eagles Ladies Auxiliary. Letter C, a donation of $1,750 to the Hanover Central High School Girls Basketball Team from the Hanover Junior Wildcats. And letter D, a donation of $100, 50 to the middle school, and 50 to Red Cedars, to the Hanover Lunches of Love Program from the Dorian family. This will require formal board action.
I'll make a motion to accept all the donations that Mr. Mintz just read off. Anybody want a second?
I'll say.
Comments or discussion? Roll call.
Belkey.
Yes.
Burdan.
Yes.
Haskell.
Yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Felizca. Yes.
For the 450 approval.
Nobody has signed up for comments relative not on agenda. Any board members have any comments? Happy Thanksgiving. Good Thanksgiving, long weekend. Hope everybody enjoys it. All right, who would like to make a motion and join the meeting? Oh, I'll always like to make a motion. I'll...